Meeting will be going live in about one minute. And for those joining us in the audience, if you need the agenda packet, you can get that at charlottesville.gov/agenda.
Could somebody talk so I can make sure my stuff's working?
Hello, Vice Mayor McGill. I think we have four members of council, the four we were expecting today. And I saw Michael Payne there briefly, so. I think we are ready to start the meeting when you are.
Okay. So I call this. Special meeting to order.
Okay, I'll do roll call. Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Snook.
Here.
Ms. Walker, absent. Ms. McGill.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good late afternoon to everyone. Wanted to go over. The proposed ordinance and first wanted to give a little background. And then sort of go through some specifics with this proposed ordinance. The background is that the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors. At their July 15th meeting, I believe, started to talk about enacting a local ordinance. That had some stricter guidelines than the current executive order issued by Governor Northam. When it comes to. Activities related to COVID-19. The Board of Supervisors met last week and again discussed in a special meeting enacting such an ordinance. But they wanted to hold off at that time. Because they would like for the city and the county to coordinate their efforts and so that. If the city council wants to enact an ordinance, that it could enact it at about the same time as the county. And. The effective dates of the ordinances would be the same. So that again. Individuals and businesses within both the city and county do have some consistency. And the regulations that would apply. Last, I believe it was last Thursday, Mayor Walker had spoken with you all. And there was consensus to go forward with a special meeting today for the city to consider its own. Ordinance that again has some stricter guidelines than those instituted by Governor Northam's executive order. And it's my understanding, I know that the County Board of Supervisors met today at 3:00 PM. And they enacted their ordinance just recently, I think, within the last 15 minutes. So I did want to walk you through a bit about the ordinance before you. Really, there are three specific aspects in this ordinance that are what most would term stricter. Than the current executive order by Governor Northam. The first such aspect is the in-person gatherings of 50 or less. Executive Order number 67 on June 30th by Governor Northam took Virginia into. Phase three and an executive order 67 would had been a 50 person limit on gatherings. Expanded to a 250 person limit on gatherings. This ordinance before you would take the city back to, again, the phase two guidelines, which still limited in-person gatherings to 50 people or less. The second aspect. Substantively in which this local ordinance would be incongruent with the state's executive order is restaurant capacity. In phase two, there was still a 50% occupancy limit on restaurants. And. Again, phase three, which was issued, the executive order was issued on June 30th. Removed the occupancy limits on restaurants, but it did, it's important to note that while occupancy limits were lifted on restaurants. It still had a requirement for social distancing within restaurants of six feet between tables and chairs. Then the third substantive aspect. That applies is the face cover and. Governor Northam had a May 29th executive order for cloth face coverings. And. That applied to certain indoor spaces, but I did want to talk about. It only applied to certain workplaces and it also. It, there were a few indoor spaces that weren't, weren't actually listed in that executive order. What this local ordinance would do would be to capture almost all indoor spaces of indoor public spaces. And it's important to note that the ordinance itself. When I talk about workplaces, the state also issued, the Department of Labor issued a set of guidelines for all employers. And the ordinance makes it clear that if, if your enterprise or where you work is covered by the state. Department of Labor guidelines, that in fact, those guidelines would apply rather than this ordinance. Those are the substantive aspects. Now, there are some differences in the county and the city. Proposed ordinances that I wanted to go over, there aren't many, but it is worth talking about them. Number one, the city's ordinance is premised on the city charter. And the county's ordinance is premised on the state code that applies to counties. They substantively say the same thing. This is to prevent the spread of contagious diseases. And the enabling authority in both the charter and in the state code are the same. But it's important to note that, again, when we talk about differences, that's a difference. Another difference that you will find is that in the penalty section of this ordinance. What you will find is that we require that law enforcement officers provide a warning. Before any action is taken on any individual or business. I think the counties did not have a warning for every. Particular aspect of the penalty section. Another aspect that is different. And again, this is more just based on geography, really. You will notice in the county's ordinance, there are a lot of listings of farm breweries, wineries and distilleries. Our ordinance, instead of saying farm brewery, winery or distillery talks about micro. Producers as well as small breweries, and that would be the more applicable business enterprise in the city rather than farm breweries, wineries and distilleries. One other difference, and this is something it's, it's worth perhaps the council talking about. It's, it's my understanding in talking to most of you that you do not want this to be a jailable offense. And therefore, penalties are class three and class four misdemeanors within this ordinance. Over the weekend, the county did change the face covering penalty to a class one misdemeanor. And the reason that they did that is that the executive order by the governor for face coverings. Is a class, a violation, there is a class one misdemeanor and. You know, again, the county is going that way. It's my understanding from talking to each of you, I believe that you do not favor. A jail penalty at this time in your penalty section. And therefore, your penalty section again makes everything either a class three or class four misdemeanor, which they are not punishable by jail time. Those are kind of the points I wanted to raise. Again, the county did pass their ordinance. About, I guess, 20 minutes ago now and. Again, I've tried to highlight the differences in the city and county ordinance, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Do any counselors have questions for Mr. Blair?
The question that I've got, certainly we've been getting a lot of emails from people running restaurants. Question I have is really not a legal question, but a practical question, which is to go to. To go to where we're headed, to 50% occupancy. As opposed to the phase three, which has no occupancy limits, but still requires social distancing. I would think that for most indoor facilities, requiring social distancing comes pretty close to a 50% limit anyway. Is that? A reasonable thought?
There's any specific person who's able to answer that, but that was an observation that I had, especially as I think, consider the restaurants in the city specifically. Which are typically smaller in format, I get, and I have a related question, but I'll, if anyone else has any thoughts on that. I don't know that any of our staff has a specific on that. But my curiosity is around what that means for exterior seating. And so some cases of restaurants expanding their, their exterior seating to be on what they maybe normally do, whether it's in the city or the county. That should not be impacted by these capacity limits. Is that correct, Mr. Blair?
Yes, when you look at section 4A of the proposed ordinance, it talks about its indoor occupancy.
I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
I mean, I would be curious to know what the, what the practical effect of this is going to be because I. My suspicion is that the difference is going to be fairly small between the, you've got to do social distancing and you can't have more than 50%. I also suspect that if you're talking about social distancing. Probably the major effect would be in places like bars and so on, where you can have all the limits you want on where the, where the chairs and tables are set up. But people aren't sitting at the tables anyway, in a lot of cases. And so at that point, the 50% occupancy. Has, has a specific number attached to it that is more readily enforceable than. Looking around and saying, oh, I see some people standing three feet apart and they should be six feet apart. So, and, and the, the restaurant owner would know better. He's going to know or she's going to know what the occupancy load is and therefore they will know, okay, I'm allowed 100 people in here right now. I'm only going to let 50 people in the door. I can count that. That's a helpful thing, it seems to me, and it would allow for some certainty on the, on the part of the restaurateur. That the, just, okay, you've got to keep everybody six feet away is not going to let, you're just not going to be able to enforce that. So the 50% of the occupancy load, as I, as I've thought about how I would respond to my restaurateur friends who have been contacting me. My, my suspicion is, number one, it's not going to hurt them. And number two, that it's going to help them if they're trying, if they are truly trying to enforce. What the law would require. So that's, that's my thought on that. I also add on the question of, of making it a jailable offense. First of all, no judge is going to put somebody in jail for failing to wear a mask. And if you make it a jailable offense, all you really do is you give them the right to have a lawyer. And then ultimately, we have to pay for the lawyer probably. If it's a court-appointed lawyer that's coming up. So I see all kinds of reasons why that's a problem. I see no advantage to having it be a jailable offense and having the class three or class four misdemeanor is by far preferable.
Yeah, I don't want to be putting the police in the situation where they're. Potentially arresting somebody and taking them to jail, where we're trying to get people out of jail because they're not wearing a mask.
I'm a little divergent. So I did observe the county's meeting and just got some things going in my head. And I wasn't sure if Paul or someone from the city manager's office can just speak to what our plans are to kind of do some things in parallel with the county relative to signage, relative to this ambassador program that they're promoting. I just think that might be helpful for council as well as the public to kind of understand what collaboration is happening in that way.
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to speak to that. So we had a discussion with the county last week on Friday, late in the day about the ambassador program. And essentially spinning up a joint effort to educate, inform, reinforce. The idea of wearing masks and following the guidelines out in businesses as well as public gatherings in places where people will. Will be out in the public and as part of that proposal, there was two elements to it. One would be a contracted service with a third party that we're proposing. And the other piece to that would be also using available staff within the park and rec department that. Their customer service agents, they're familiar with public engagement and the elements of engage, engaging the public in behavioral. Guidance. So we're working with them on, early on, on what that program would look like, who would be necessarily involved in it, what the messaging would be. Obviously, having the messaging be. The same across both the county and the city is very important. People don't delineate once you cross the border where you're at. So we want not just the messaging, but the program elements to be the same. That's the advantage to having one contractor actually manage the program. The other piece to that is also the technology piece. So as part of the, the program, there would be surveys conducted. To gather information on where people are, are collecting and taking that survey data to create heat maps and understanding. You know, where are areas that we need to focus geographically on having ambassadors present and helping to reinforce that positive behavior.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions that people from the public had brought up to me. And one is, what is sort of the, the reasoning behind the wedding exemption? I know that's now in Albemarles, but. Particularly because those are events that would probably are potentially bringing a lot of out-of-state people. They don't seem unique and their potential to be super-spreader events than anything else.
And, and that again, was just trying to be congruent with the county. Now, if the council would like to remove that. Which again, is sort of an exemption, it is an exemption for the 50 person limit. I mean, that the council's free if you want to amend it. But it was really, again, to be more as congruent with the county as possible on, on the ordinance.
And the second question I have relates to the. Let me. Get it up. The, and, and I think this does deviate from the county version. And I'm just curious, the reasoning behind it is in section five. Be the third item related to expressive activity on public street, public sidewalk on, and on other public property as permitted by a special event permit issued by the city manager. I just got a couple of questions about that relating to. You know, questions around free speech and, and why, what reasoning is it that it differs from the counties, which is a little bit broader? And if there's a reason that it's not sort of worded more broadly as just like generally like what is permitted by law for, you know, freedom of expression, et cetera.
Right. Um, if you can give me a moment to bring up the county's ordinance. Because I want to get their exact language that they had. See here.
I think it's section five.
Yeah. In a, well, and, and I will just read off the, what I think are the differences in a public park, subject to park rules. And on other public property expressly designated for expressive activity by its governmental owner or occupant. In order for, we do not, the city currently does not have public property expressly designated for expressive activity by its governmental owner or occupant. I think you might recall the county. It's either the spring or early summer designated, I believe, the. In front of the county office building on. McIntyre Street, they actually did designate that an area for expressive activity, if I'm not mistaken. And also. You know, for, in the city to have a special event. Which is using public property for demonstrations that are not spontaneous. You, you know, public parks and other public property do require a special event permit.
And that said, though, the spontaneous events would still. Be permitted.
Right, right. And, and, and is that, Counselor Payne, is that what you're getting at is more the spontaneous events?
I think so primarily. I mean, there's obviously longer conversations around that whole process, but I think the. Concerns I heard from members of the public relate. Just to the question of whether the wording of it would. Potentially restrict expression of First Amendment rights that should be allowed regardless of whether you have a permit or not.
Well, I mean, if, if the council wants to make an amendment, once you get to that point, we can about spontaneous events. Because they actually are covered within the special event regulations, but we can work up some language about spontaneous events as well.
I don't know if there, I don't know if there's any functional difference. Again, I know I've heard concerns from member of the, members of the public, so it may help to just clarify that point and, and, and be more clear on it. But again, I, I don't know if there's any functional difference in the language between those two.
Well, I'm happy again, and again, when we get to the more. Once you all decide to enact this.
I want to be overall questioning.
You've frozen Lloyd.
I think his internet was delayed too.
Mr. Blair, did you want to finish your thought before, while Counselor Snook is frozen?
Sure, while he thaws.
There he is.
I think he's thawed.
Okay, I have no idea. What, what I may have said that anybody heard. I don't know why I suddenly seem to have gotten everybody frozen. As far as I could tell, y'all were frozen. I was doing fine.
Before you said anything.
Anyway, so my, my concern is that we don't really know epidemiologically. Eight points are really important. Well. Am I back?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what's going on. Okay. We don't know epidemiologically what the important facts are. We don't know, for example, whether the RT, which is for Virginia, now it is down to 1.03, which is still above the 1.0 kind of magic number. We don't know what that tells us for here in Charlottesville and Albemarle. The statistics I've seen show Albemarle below one, so Charlottesville about 1.07. We also don't know whether the new cases that are coming. And the new cases continue to rise rather quickly, but they're not reflecting in new hospitalizations or additional deaths. And so the question I suppose is, and what I'd love to be able to ask Dr. Bonds or somebody is. Are we seeing a lot of marginal technically COVID, but not, not really symptomatic cases because we're doing contact tracing now? And is the situation. Truly different from the way it was a month ago? And I don't know, I don't know how to think about that. I don't know what the right answers are. I guess the best, the best answer I would give is that for these purposes. We're putting a very short timeline on it and we can, we would certainly have to revisit it within a couple of months. And if we went ahead and gave it and said, okay, yes, we will do this. But with a short timeline and just see how it works, are we going to get to an acceptable position? Because I, I fully agree with the people in the restaurant business that they were just beginning to start thinking that maybe things were heading in the right direction. And now we're trying to pull the rug out from under. As I said before, I don't really think that's the case, but it's their business. It's not mine and it's their perception and not mine. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to wrap my head around this.
Well, and I think I would agree with all that. I think the other major variable, obviously, which, you know, we all recognize is just that UVA students will be returning. And how that variable. Will interact with the, the, the whole situation. We just, we just don't know.
And maybe by putting this out there for two months during the time when the students are coming back, that will give them a chance to learn the behavior that we want them to learn. So that we might then be able to be less restricted. So that we might then be able to be less restrictive come the end of September.
And I think that is. That's that's the biggest danger for from a public health perspective. I think from a business perspective as well. If UVA students coming back from across the country and across the world is an enormous super spreading event. We will have to. It it will be a much worse situation.
I mean, right now, anybody coming from the seven five seven area code should be kind of assumed to be infectious. Their their infection rate is really high. And we've got a lot of students seven five seven.
And to then, I just think it's worth noting, because I I know that supervisor McKeel mentioned it during their meeting that, you know, President Ryan did. Reach out to the council and the board of supervisors earlier today just to express support for these ordinances and. Expressing, you know, their interest in partnering with us as we learn to keep this community safe. And obviously, we're also balancing, you know, economic impacts. But I just thought that might be worth noting as well.
And I'm really glad that they're they're willing to to be active partners with us in that because it's that's essential, it seems to me. They can enforce things with their students that we can't reasonably enforce.
Michael, I wanted to make sure that your questions were fully, you felt your questions were fully answered about. The section five, the spontaneous freedom of speech.
I think so, as well as, you know, I understand the the wedding exemption and how it aligns with the counties. I still don't, I'm not sure I. Understand the reasoning of what makes weddings as events any less likely to. Be sites to spread the coronavirus, but.
I'm happy to. Take them out of the ordinance personally.
My guess is that the important piece there is. That we often have a situation where there are wedding ceremonies in one jurisdiction and the reception in the other jurisdiction. And it doesn't flow logically one way or the other. It happens both ways. And I I think, again, we're just talking about two months here. My guess is that they're not gonna be a lot of weddings, ceremonies and receptions in the in the next two months anyway. Just because most people have been canceling them. But I don't know. I I I'm inclined to to say, let's leave it in there because, again, we've we've got to work with. Both the university and the county and if we're all working together in the same way. We'll probably, we'll probably come out okay.
I'm comfortable with with keeping it in, given I definitely recognize that there could be cross jurisdictional. And I also think there's a lot of venues for a wedding and I'm just not clear, like the fifty person rule, Mr. Blair. So let's think about in a county situation where you're at a winery and there's an event. Is even if it's outdoors, is that, you know, how did where do where do those draw lines get drawn?
Well, the county's ordinance, again, like I I stated earlier, they had some special. They had specific wording for. Farm wineries, breweries and distilleries, and I believe that included events at those particular. Venues. So if if you had a special event for a farm winery brewery or distillery. I think that was accepted under section five B in their ordinance. And and again, that is also state code driven as well. The state a few years ago really did. Kind of play a little bit of Bigfoot and and put in some. Some specific legislation for farm breweries, wineries and distilleries.
And I mean, my my concern would just be indoor far more than anything outdoor, which quite frankly, you know. Not suggesting changing anything in it, but quite frankly, I think the, you know. Wouldn't be unreasonable to have a larger limit outdoors than indoors in terms of number of people. But again, I I don't think it's that huge. The the wedding thing is that huge of an issue. It's just. Strikes me as a little unusual of an exemption, at least from a public health perspective in terms of. That motivating the reasoning for the exemption.
I'm sure the county feels it's very important for their business.
I'm sure.
And and it is worth noting, I think. In terms of that particular exception. You know. Section five B. One gatherings for religious exercise, including but not limited to religious ceremonies. Now, I think. That can also be applied to. Do certain weddings.
Certainly.
So I I would just point that out, that that exemption might also apply to some weddings.
Yeah, I was just about to bring that up. I remember that part in there too.
Well, I I won't belabor that point and and hold anything up over it, but.
Are there any further questions or do we feel like we're ready for a vote?
How how do others feel about, again, I don't know if there's much of a functional difference, but clarifying under the. Event permits, just some language about spontaneous events, just to provide some clarity there.
I'm fully in support of that. It's it is kind of what we're practicing, but it helped add some clarity because I know we've gotten questions already about some of the events that have taken place spontaneously. Not being permitted and I've tried to do my best to explain the subtle differences there, but I think that clarification would be helpful. So, Mr. Blair, in the motion then, should I just reference? With a with with an amendment to further clarify spontaneous events.
Yeah, I would probably. Add the language spontaneous demonstrations as defined in the city's special event permit regulations. That's what I would do because they that's where the definition really lies.
And that would be as a B four?
B three. I would just add a a comma and add that language in there.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
I am too.
I know that we're treading on tricky First Amendment grounds anytime we try to get too picky as to spontaneous versus planned. Versus other other way to look at these demonstrations. So let's try to treat them all fairly.
And I would just ask is some of these more like logistical things come in play if if the city manager's offices could keep all of council informed. So that we can continue to to pass that along to the community and also other partners in the county and and the university.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm happy to make the motion if we're ready for that.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the ordinance to prevent the spread of the novel coronavirus at the disease it causes. Kindly referred to as COVID nineteen as presented with a amendment. And B three for spontaneous demonstrations as defined in the city's special event regulations to be clarified.
Second.
Ms. Thomas, will you take a roll or take the vote?
Is that second by Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Payne, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. We have a four fifth majority.
Yes, so this will be, the ordinance will be effective August first at midnight.
Excellent. Thank you.
At midnight between December, between July thirty one and August one, or midnight of August one into August two?
I think the former.
Should we say eleven fifty nine? Or twelve oh one?
Twelve oh one.
And I just, I mean, I hope that the community understands, like, no, we certainly have heard. The calls from a number of different sides of this issue, but just doing our best to write that, walk that tightrope, I think, is what another supervisor said around. You know, just the health of our community and the economic impact. And we know that that involves both our constituents as well as our business base. But we're just continuing and we will continue to listen to you and to partner, as Mr. Snook said earlier, you know. In a couple of months' time, we'll be certainly revisiting this and and working forward as new information and patterns evolve. But I just don't want anyone to think that this is a decision that we take lightly.
And I would I would add on again, particularly with, you know, the number one priority is is the public health impact. And but we've also got a lot of questions about economic impact and I think part of, at least for me, and I'm sure all of us, the motivation for this is that. Nothing would be worse for the economy than for UVA students coming back as well as other things changing to be a super spreader event. That's not gonna be good for economic development or the economy in 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 any way. And to prevent that, I think, is is. A decision with worth making.
And I just want to commend the county. Obviously, this is something that they have certainly taken the lead on and I'm really helpful to kind of have them. Kind of lay the foundation from which we could build and just really appreciate their partnership and this and throughout this this pandemic as well as universities. And, Mr. Blair, thank you for your work to convert the versions that they presented in in a way that council could entertain them today. So really appreciate the support from everyone all around.
None of these decisions. When it comes to balancing public well being and economic well being, which is also public well being. So. We're just. Doing the best we can and trying to project with what our numbers are showing us. Thank you all. Thank everybody.
I think, Mr. Snook, are you gonna be on three sixty tomorrow?
I had offered. I had not heard back from Mr. Wheeler.
Well, one of us will be on, so we'll be talking more about this tomorrow.
Okay.
I think Mr. Snook is gonna be on.
All right.
All right, well, council adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian and team. Thanks again, Mr. Blair, Mr. Oberdorfer.
Thank you.
Thank you all.